7:03 PM. We are in Conference Room C of the Fisher Administration Building at 12121 West North Avenue. We will begin with a moment of silent reflection. Ms. Newman, please call the roll.
Mr. Doman.
Excused?
Ms. Fraley.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Excused?
Ms. Muefeld, here. Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Rolland.
Here.
Dr. Jessup Anger.
Here.
Cameron Clark.
Here.
Jalissa Runyon.
Here.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board regularly schedules meetings, provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider your this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comments on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond to the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on the public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there any public comment at the beginning of our meeting? Seeing none, we will move into the agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Muefeld.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Fraley. Any discussion on any items? Ms. Fraley?
I just had a quick question. Would it be possible to maybe quarterly or twice a year see if there's any trends or have reported out to us if there's any particular trends in the resignations? I found myself, when I was looking at materials over the weekend, trying to look back to see like, is it special education aides that's leaving? Like, is it a particular subset of our staff? And I wouldn't expect it to be done all the time, but like at some regular interval just to, or to let us know that there's no trend, or we're starting to see a trend, something like that.
Sure. Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any community comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, please call the roll, Ms. Newman.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Ms. Muefeld?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rolland?
Yes.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
Yes. The consent agenda passes. The next is a non-resident space availability report. An action item. Let's read the motion, and then we will move into the presentation. Ms. Muefeld?
Yes, thank you. It is recommended that the school board approve the following space available for the 2020-21 school year for open enrollment. Space available for open enrollment applicants in grade JK zero, space available in grade SK zero, space available in grade one, zero, space available in grade two, zero, space available in grade three, zero, space available in grade four, zero, space available in grade five, zero, space available in grade six unlimited, space available in grade seven unlimited, space available in grade eight unlimited, space available in grade nine unlimited, space available in grade 10 unlimited, space available in grade 11 unlimited, space available in grade 12 unlimited. Based on projected enrollment numbers in the Wauwatosa School District Open Enrollment Policy 5113, the Board recognizes that all applicants in grades 6 through 12 will be assigned to the Wauwatosa Virtual School only, and no applicants will be assigned to Whitman Middle School, Longfellow Middle School, Wauwatosa East High School, or Wauwatosa West High School. Space available for special education services, early childhood, zero, significant developmental disability, zero, specific learning disability, zero, autism, zero, orthopedic impairment, zero, intellectual disability, zero, emotional behavioral disabilities, zero, other health impairment, zero, traumatic brain injury, zero, hearing impaired, zero, vision impaired, zero, speech and language, zero, occupational therapy, zero, physical therapy, zero. And I so move.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Newman, very much, Ms. Rolland. And we are going to have a presentation before a vote.
Thank you. We just wanted to provide a brief overview this evening of what has guided our recommendation for tonight. So PI 36 requires that during the January meeting of each school year, school boards vote on open enrollment space for the upcoming school year. Within that rule, school boards must determine space available by grade level, and space cannot be determined by building at this time, and that we must also determine what space is available in special education programs and services throughout the district. PI 36 also requires that school boards have policy that dictate how they will establish their space available for the upcoming year. Our school board policy is 5113, and we use class size here in Wauwatosa. Within our policy, it has us go through a process for determining what our current enrollment is so that we can project what our enrollment will be for next year. It also establishes classroom capacities for each grade level for the purpose of open enrollment space only. And those classroom capacities are 18 for junior kindergarten and senior kindergarten, 20 for grades 1 through 5, 23 in our core academic subjects for grades 6 through 12, and in the Wauwatosa Virtual Academy because of the program offered there, we do not have a class size capacity. It is unlimited. We also determine then the number of sections that we need for each of the grades based on this information, and we establish our grade level space from there. So based on the application of the process in school board policy 5113, our recommendations for junior kindergarten through 5th grade show that we have zero seats available in any of those grades.
And our recommendation carries forth with grades 6 through 12, however, we have unlimited space available because we do have the Wauwatosa Virtual Academy, but no seats available at the building levels. We also, as Ms. Powers mentioned, we do need to set special education recommendation for caseload. DPI, we follow their guidelines, and what they state is, when you're looking at special education numbers, you have to look at first, is there space available at the grade level in which the student is enrolling? And we have said, no, there isn't. Then you also have to look at, is there space available in the area according to that student's IEP, what their needs are? And we're also saying that the space is not available in that area as well. So you can deny special education open enrollment. You do not have to hire new staff in order to make sure someone can enroll. So those are the kind of the criteria. And so at this time, no enrollment in special education as well.
Those are our recommendations.
Questions or comments from the Board?
So in May or June, you guys just kind of look and see how many seats are available and adjust based on the criteria?
We are allowed to take a look again in June, after we send the original acceptance or in this case denial letters to families. At that point, we're allowed to look at the building level as well and determine if there's space in individual school buildings and offer at that point. We often see that with junior kindergarten and senior kindergarten especially.
And just to clarify that even in, excuse me, in June or July, we will not be adding students to the four secondary schools. We just, we have never done that. With the class size set at 23 and least staff at 25.5, it's not going to happen, so.
Thank you.
Any community comment or questions on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Newman, please call the roll.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Ms. Muefeld?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rolland?
Yes.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
Yes. And that passes. We will now be moving into our superintendent action item. Mr. Phillips?
Sure. It is recommended that the Board approve the cemetery real estate transaction as presented at the January 13, 2020 meeting, and I so move.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Ms. Fraley? Dr. Rolland, do you want to do a high-level kind of overview of what this was and?
Yeah, essentially, it's the Cemetery Board had come forward and wanted to, they were looking at their property and the property lines, and they needed, they recognized that there's an area that has generally been recognized as cemetery that is owned by the school district. The request was that we deed that property over, and we're not using it, we didn't even know we had it. And ultimately, they need that so they can look for historical designation for the chapel that's in the cemetery. So worked through a process to make sure the legalities are all taken care of, they give up an easement, Cemetery Board gives up an easement to our property, and we move forward.
Any more discussion or questions on this item?
Thank you. I still have concerns about this proposal. I know we discussed it, and I'm not sure exactly how I'm going to vote tonight. I, again, I have concerns about it. We could have partnered with the cemetery to meet their objective without this transaction, and I am not yet confident that it is in the best interest of the school district to do this swap.
Thank you. Any other Board comment or questions? Any community comment on this item? Ms. Newman, please call the roll.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Ms. Muefeld?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rolland?
Yes.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
Yes. And that passes. We now have a student presentation. We've got a couple. A? Sarah is here. Sarah, by the way, spent some time with me once in Knoxville.
Yes.
Doing some major education of how to pin trade, and I really still appreciate that. DI Global's, it's great to see you. Thank you for your work and your advocacy on behalf of students for coming tonight. We're really excited to have you, looking forward to the presentation. And this is part of a bigger conversation we're having tonight about mental health in schools. So it's really kicking that off, and so lots of, lots of important stuff to get into tonight, and I really appreciate you taking the time to join us and putting this together.
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
So as Dr. Jessup Anger said, my name is Sarah Gifford, and I'm a junior at Wauwatosa East High School, and tonight I will be discussing school shootings and mental health. So along with, in, with school shootings, I will give some background experience, or some background information, and talk about east and west experiences, and again, talk about how students and teachers feel. I'll do pretty much the same thing for mental health, and then at the end, I will discuss possible change. So in order to collect a lot of the information for this, I sent out a survey to both students and staff. It ran from this past Monday to this past Saturday. All questions were optional and anonymous, and 407 students responded and 100 teachers responded from east and west combined. So on the school shooting front, just a little bit of background information, eight children die each day from gun violence. The US has had 1,300 school shootings since 1970. In four out of five school shootings, someone knew about the attacker's plan in advance. In 2018, east had a planned school shooting, and the west principal in 1993 was shot and killed. So east and west have already had experiences with this, and we need to stop it before something more serious happens. On December 13, 2019, east and west have had walkouts where there were students and guest speakers in order to raise awareness about this. Permission slips were needed to participate in the actual walkout, but students could walk to the field without penalty. And I think that this is a great way to, that started this whole movement. One of the questions I asked students was, how often do they think about school shootings? A few times a week is what the majority of people said, with 23%. However, more people said after a school shooting happens. When asked what affects how, what affects how often they think about it, some students said, I don't know where I would go if a shooter did come. Wherever there's a new one in the news, that my mind thinks, automatically thinks, that could be anywhere, that could be us. I shouldn't be as worried to go to school as I am. And then I asked the students some more questions about drills. Thirty-seven percent of them said that an open discussion of what to do in a situation is the best idea in order to prevent this epidemic. And they believe that drills should take place every month to every other month. Currently, east and west have different types of drills each month, however, every month does not have a lockdown or evacuation drill. There are other types of drills, such as health drills and fire drills that sometimes take place instead. And neither school has built-in time to talk about school shootings. Typically, after a drill, we just go back to class as normal. So I asked teachers the same questions, and they also agreed. Thirty-nine percent of them said an open discussion of what to do in the situation would be best. However, they thought that these drills should happen less frequently, more like once a semester to once every other month. And then the final question I asked them in this part of the survey was, what do you think the school board should do to best address school shootings? Some student responses were, talk about it more. It's never really brought up in our district, and I think that talking about it more could make people feel less anxious about the situation. Another student said, tell us students what to do when we don't feel safe. Teacher said, have additional student resource officers to help be proactive. We need to work more on prevention. The second part of my survey focused on mental health. Just a little bit of background information, 61% of teens say that they feel a lot of pressure to get good grades. Seven in 10 teens say that anxiety is a major issue, and the average high school student has the same anxiety levels as a psychiatric patient in the 1950s. Currently, east has a Raise Your Voice Club that wants to create a more open environment about mental health in schools. Mental health is also briefly discussed in the required health class. So I asked students and teachers, how can mental health be more positively discussed? Right before this question, they were asked, on a scale of 1 to 10, what, how is mental health discussed, with 10 being most positively? And the majority of both students and teachers said 5, which I saw that as not positively or negatively, just kind of neutral or not discussed at all. Some student responses to this question were, everyone goes through mental health problems at some point in their lives, so we need to realize that this is a nearly universal problem and treat it as such. I think west focuses more on what students do to other students and don't pay enough attention to how school itself affects mental health. Some teacher responses were, I think we need to continue to normalize all of this. We need kids to know that it's safe and healthy to talk about things when they are struggling. Some students and teachers are not as vocal about their needs, however, these needs still need to be met. Validating student struggles, mental health is so important. Another question I asked them was, if they felt comfortable talking to their teachers about mental health or other issues? On this scale, 1 was not comfortable at all, and 10 was the most comfortable. The majority of students, 48% of students rated their comfortability a 1, 2, or 3, with 1 being not comfortable at all. Forty-nine percent of students also said that they didn't discuss their problems with a staff member. However, 44% of teachers believe that students do feel comfortable talking about mental health or personal issues. This relationship needs to be strengthened in order for mental health to be more positively discussed. Question I asked, do you be in support of high schools having therapists on campus to talk to students on an appointment basis? An overwhelming 76% said yes. Kids need to be able to trust adults in high school, and it is hard for a lot of us, too. This is an essential skill that we need to learn early on in life. Another student said, I couldn't encourage that more. People just need someone that they can vent to and have it be private. When I asked teachers the same question, again, yes was the majority, with 79% of teachers saying that. I have had kids in, I have had numerous students in all classes ask me to leave class because they were feeling anxious or have anxiety. So many of my students deal with mental health issues that affect their class. Yes, there is such a high demand for this. Then I asked them, how can the school district best address mental health issues? And they said, not being overly awkward and nice about it, this isn't a subject you should sugarcoat. Talk about it positively, not talk about it like you're different if you have one. Not hide the fact that most students have mental health issues. Some teachers said, students need much more education on coping strategies. Talk about it in a positive light. Hold student meetings, bring in mental health therapists. Mental health needs to be even more of a priority in districts, or in schools, even having mental health days for staff. So after I collected all of those student responses and looked at them, I decided to come up with some ideas for possible change. On the school shooting front, I think that drills should vary in the time, place, and manner in which they are conducted in. For example, having drills conducted at lunch or passing time before or after school in different classes at different times of the day. And building in time after drills and throughout the school year to talk about situations in every classroom. We just started second semester, so this would be an easy time to build this in just for 10 minutes, you know, where do you go for this sort of drill, and what do you do? And I think another important thing in preventing school shootings is creating a better student-teacher relationship. We've always heard the thing, see something, say something, and if we create a better relationship with teachers, I think that would improve it a lot. And I think that the school board should continue to support walkouts and other student-led events. On the mental health front, I think that we should implement having therapists for students to talk to if they would like to, create a more open and honest discussion around mental health. That could also be done in the first few minutes of class, you know, once a month or whatever, and make sure that students and staff know what resources are available and where to access them, and create an awareness week in order for students to know strategies for dealing with mental health. So this is the final quote that I would like to leave you guys with. Listen to the students, give them a chance. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Comments, questions on the Board?
I'm sort of curious, what prompted this, Sarah?
So about a week after the walkout, I tried an AP Lang paper, and it was an op-ed piece, and I decided to write it about school shootings. So I sent out a very small survey to not a lot of, I got maybe 10 responses, and then I started thinking about it more. I emailed Mr. Rolland, and he asked if I would like to present, and I said yes, and then I made the survey two weekends ago and then sent it out. And both the principals were very supportive.
Well, thank you. I mean, I think you got a great response rate, not just from students, but from, from staff in the building.
It was 40% of staff members that responded.
Right, in a very short period of time, in a very busy week.
Yeah.
Final swing. I was shocked by that response, but I really appreciate you taking the time to do that. We're going to be talking a lot about mental health tonight, so it's really nice to not only have Jalissa and Cameron here, but to hear from a broader swath of students and faculty as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for doing this as part of my work on the Safety Committee, and we're looking at all of these internal ways that we can help better communicate with the educators and the students and families. This is great information. Thank you for taping it on, and we're going to build on that.
Of course. There's also more information that I did not present that is in that packet, so.
It's very good.
Thank you.
Very good. And we're going to continue to build on this. Drills actually has come up in the past as, you know, everyone comes to it, new sometimes every year, and also not just in the high schools, the middle schools, and also in the elementary schools. It is, it can be frightening because you're not sure, and even though I know at the middle school, they try to make it, specifically, they try to make it more of an occurrence not in a threatening way, it still is unknown, and, and also trying to explain to the families what's happening. So it's definitely something that we're going to internalize and follow up on.
I'd like to say also, good job, too. Like, two things that I really, really like, like a lot that I also think that would help is the therapist. I think that'd be like a really, really good idea. I definitely think that a lot of kids will take that in and use it so much, and even teachers said they would, too. And then I also think that after a drill, like she said, is to take time afterwards and say, not the why, but the what, and you know, like really talk about it more, and just don't, not just going to go back and do math, just talk about what just happened and why it happened, and how we feel about it.
Again, just thank you for doing this and good job on the presentation, and like, Jalissa pretty much covered what I was going to say. Like, the discussion afterwards is like, so like, key to me, and that really stuck out to me because a lot of time, teachers just like go back to what they were doing, like, oh, we missed class time, blah, blah, blah. And like, the class is always more talked about afterwards because everyone's like, well, what would we do? And like, it's just not really addressed, and it would just be like a big comfort to me, and I'm sure every other student feels like actually addressed and talked about. And yeah, thank you for doing that.
Sarah, I think one of the things, as I was listening to this, I'm curious about, you got to look at all this data, and you probably had also conversations with students and teachers who are hearing this and seeing it. What are your kind of, if you were to, if you had a magic wand and could wave it tonight, what's your three big things that you would say, I would love for you, based off of all these conversations around one or both of these issues, that you would love to say, make this happen, and we can make it happen tomorrow?
I would love just to spend that time, like my student representatives were saying, spend that time after the drills, and it's just 10 minutes, and just say, what do you guys feel about this? Because that, I think, will really open up the conversation, because right now, nobody really talks about it. And I think that at this point, we just need to realize that this is the reality, and we need to face it head-on, and on the mental health front and on the school shootings front. In addition, specifically on the mental health front, we should implement therapists in schools. A lot of people mentioned in the survey, and I didn't put those responses on there, is that some families can't afford it, or they don't feel comfortable asking their parents to go to a therapist. So if they can go before or after school, or during a study hall, or advisory, or other free period, and just have somebody to talk to, I think that high school is such like a vital time for people to, you know, continue to grow, and if we don't address these problems now, like what's going to happen in the future? On the survey, I asked students if they would, if they go, if they currently see a therapist, and there were three options, yes, no, no, but I would like to. And about 20% of the students said, no, but I would like to. And I think that, that would be something that was very important. Another thing that I think that the Board should do is just create more representative drills. Like, I never had a drill that's during passing time or lunch. I don't even know where I would go for a drill if I was in the bathroom, like, I just, there are so many situations that we don't practice and don't talk about that are possible. So, yeah.
Thank you. Any last questions from the Board before we open things up for the community comment? Community members, questions or comments? If you can share your name and addresses, both, please.
I've never done this before, so.
It's okay.
My name's Andrea Fisher. I live at 2736 North Park Drive, just like three blocks up this way. I am an alum from Tulsa East, and I live in the district, and I have a daughter at Eisenhower. And wonderful job on your presentation, and I just wanted to say thank you as a community member for being so supportive of the walkouts. I was so proud of our district and how they led the way for the rest of the Milwaukee area, for the students to be able to voice their concerns and to feel like they're getting their message across. A couple of comments I wanted to make about the mental health aspect and how it links to the mass shootings. There are already different groups that are in place that you, the district could utilize. I'm not sure if you've ever heard of the Hope Squad, or Red Gen, or Youth Frontiers. I was a teacher at Elm Brook, I'm a stay-at-home mom right now, but we had Youth Frontiers come in, and they would come in every year and do like a little retreat, and then we followed up with it with the students. I taught middle school throughout the year, and it really was a community-building, trusting, engaging experience. I highly recommend that group. They come to your school, and they have different retreats for different ages and grade levels. So if you're thinking about how can we kind of work in some of this, where we can start to build a community and trust each other a little bit more within the schools to try to prevent these shootings from happening, there are programs. There are programs out there already in place that you can look at. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And you did great. Other community commenter questions? We are going to be talking about, this kind of kicks off, we really wanted to have kind of the student voice, staff voice, and so thank you for doing this. And the timing was perfect. We're going to be talking a lot about mental health issues in particular and have a substantial presentation on that next. And we'll be talking about some legislative advocacy that we're going to be doing as a board and discussing whether or not we want to move forward with that to our state representatives. And so I hope you can stay for that and ask questions and hold, continue to hold us accountable and push us to keep fighting for this stuff.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you so much. Next up, Director of Elementary Education Kristen Bowers and Director of Secondary Education Mark Carter are going to be giving a presentation on district mental health services and staffing. And my hunch is we've got some colleagues joining in.
We do. Thank you very much. We are very pleased to have Sonya Phillips, who is a full-time school counselor, excuse me, school social worker at Wauwato's East with us tonight. Over the last year and a half, in addition to her duties as a school social worker, Sonya has been the content team leader specifically for mental health. We recognized that we needed someone to help us look at things more systematically to help us figure out what those next steps need to be. So she's done a wonderful job of cheering our mental health project and working with a team of individuals here in the district to help us identify where some of our strengths are and where some of our areas of improvement are as we move forward. So thanks so much for being here. You're on.
Thank you. So I'm Sonya Phillips. I've been a school social worker in the district. This is my 18th year. I have spent all of those 18 years at Wauwato's East. The majority of the years also shared with Plank Grove Schools. But I've been at Wauwato's East for the last few years entirely. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to speak to you about the work of the district with regard to mental health. When we think of mental health, we often think of disorders associated with mental illness in therapy. As a K-12 school district, however, we need to expand that definition to all aspects of social and emotional well-being and how our environment and supports not only identify and help those who are suffering, but also build protective factors that guard against that suffering. School mental health, school-based mental health looks at all of the systems and resources that help students and families thrive in the natural environment of school. We look to provide strong foundational supports and skills, help create a safety net for early identification and care, and then provide assistance in times of crisis. As we design a system of support in the school district, we need to ensure that we're addressing priorities of the state statutes as well. DPI specifically asks us to address mental health in the following ways. We are to help students with skills needed to cope with social change, make sound decisions, problem solve. And then we are also to provide suicide prevention training, promote positive emotional development. So all school staff in the district have some basic training in child development and have varied knowledge and skill around mental health. All school staff are trained in suicide prevention each year, as well as child abuse and neglect, identification and procedures. Recently, all staff in the district were also trained in trauma-informed schools through a Train the Trainer program through St. Ace. Additionally, Wauwato's School District ensures that at least one school-based mental health clinician is assigned to every school, including the virtual school. These clinicians include school counselors, school social workers, and school psychologists. And their specific mental health training is outlined in the slide. These three professional groups have specialties and then they also have some overlapping skills. But also we have occupational therapists, speech and language therapists, special education teachers, nurses, and others that significantly contribute to the emotional and social health of our students through their work on self-regulation, on communication, executive functioning, et cetera. So when we look at the specific mental health work in the school system through the school clinicians, and when I say school clinicians, I'm speaking specifically about school counselors, school social workers, and school psychologists for now. We can categorize it into these levels. The green level represents the work that impacts all students and is preventative in nature. We utilize Second Step K-8 and that is a social-emotional learning program that builds competencies in the hallmark, social-emotional learning competencies of self-awareness, social awareness, self-management, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. The middle schools then add a layer of bullying prevention and suicide prevention for students. And then at the high school, they focus, mostly school counselors focus on self-discovery and planning through school counseling visits to classes and in advisory lessons. Outside of the school mental health clinicians, social-emotional learning also happened in our curriculum in social studies, human growth and development through K through 12, and in building-wide efforts through, we call PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports and School and Classroom Climate Work. So the yellow level looks at our current practices to identify concerns regarding mental health. Student services staff are part of building-wide intervention teams. We call them something a little bit different in each school. But we're a part of building-wide intervention teams that look at data to determine whether students need support. So we look at our information system, Power School, now Infinite Campus. We look at DPI databases such as Edison Dues. We look at standardized testing and then other data collection that happens in the classroom. And then we are called upon to find students that may not come down to us or may not be referred by adults. So we are looking for students who may be struggling and are not coming to us directly. We're also called upon to flag, follow up on flagged items identified through a GoGuardian technology program, which is essentially a program that identifies words of concern through keystrokes of anyone who uses Wauwato's district technology. So if a student types in suicide, it will flag our principals and then our principals tend to go to student services to follow up to make sure that student is okay. Finally, we also do receive referrals from multiple sources. So a lot of times at the high school level, I have friends who bring friends to find me. Teachers, administrators, families, et cetera. Sometimes therapists in the community. So then in the red level there, students identified in need of support around mental health do receive individualized care by student services staff. All schools offer our SFAP program through Aurora to refer families and that is for short-term free counseling, up to six sessions. It is not appropriate for all situations, but it is appropriate for some. As an example, in 2018, Aurora served 222 families and had 878 appointments. Services inside the schools include individual, group, classroom, family assistance, ongoing collaboration and consultation with teaching staff, and collaboration with community agencies. So despite all of these efforts, we know that young people struggle with emotional concerns and mental health concerns across the country and we certainly no exception. Tosa-specific data shows that we have room for improvement here. So the top line is referring to data that came from our youth risk behavior survey in 2017. And then you can see that, so that was a, a sampling of high school students who were able to do that, randomized sampling, and you'll see the results at the top. So it's a couple of years ago. On the bottom, you will see information from our school perception student survey from 2018 and that is those, those results are from elementary school students. But we also know beyond these data, students are flying under our radar. They're flying under our radar with the stresses of high-stakes testing, a competitive academic environment, looming life decisions, stressful family and economic circumstances, and the painful process of knowing who they are and where they fit in. So in 2018, 19, so last school year, core student services staff met a few times through the year in order to assess the school, school district's practice using the Wisconsin School Mental Health Framework as a guideline for best practice. This framework outlines multiple practices that promote a system foundation of well-being, universal programming, best practice, identify, identification and support of those who are struggling, and best practice intensive strategies for times of crisis. So this school-based mental health committee gleaned information from multiple sources at our disposal. On the left column, you'll see we looked at many sources of data, the youth risk behavior survey, school perception student survey, data points from Power School at the time, feedback from Aurora, police reports. We asked all student services, that is those three mental health clinicians roles I was speaking to. We asked them for their feedback about what is happening universally, what's happening in pockets of practice, where are our gaps? And while, and we also talked to the superintendent student group and we also talked to some students in the high schools about what their perception is. On the right side, I'm not going to read that list, but that's, that's just an indication of all the categories that we looked at through that mental health framework through DPI to see where we're at in all of those categories. So based on our assessment of school mental health practice, we developed a SWOT analysis and started outlining priorities, which are many. We find in looking at all of the strengths, that our greatest strengths are the skilled and dedicated school clinicians who choose to work here. The district commitment to student mental health and the resource-rich community in which we live. We have, as school clinicians, have been able to partner with very local mental health groups such as Rogers, Aurora, the county, Cornerstone, have been able to have lots of conversations with them about how to streamline our services and to be able to help students return to school if they are in services outside of school. Our greatest weaknesses in our, from the student services perspective, is that our current staffing limits our ability to do anything but manage crises many of the times. We're concerned about the mental health and well-being of our staff, our teaching staff, and how that directly impacts the mental health and well-being of students and their care. And that we live in an unreasonable race to the top in our district and in our community, larger community. We have students at the high school, for example, who struggle to show up at school for fear of an A minus. We also have students who struggle to hope for passing grades in the courses that we offer. So the work of the project, the mental health project team is focused now on the opportunities we have to slowly but surely improve our mental health practices, to build collaborations with families and the mental health community, and to advocate for an environment that supports staff well-being. And this is just an example of our priorities for this year. We have, if we laid it out, it would be multiple years to sort of take care of everything that we need to take care of in order to have a best-case environment for our students and families. So at this year, we were focused on these six areas. Before I close though, I want to remind us of why we're doing this work. This is not feel-good fluff. We are in the business of learning and personal growth and we know this from brain research. The brain prioritizes information affecting survival first. So read trauma there. And then it prioritizes information generating emotions. Read relationships and self-regulation before it attends to learning. If we have commitment to increase academic achievement, science tells us that we must attend to this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions and comments from the board?
Oh, thank you. So are we going to discuss the, oh, that, okay, so that's next, the actual mental health resolution? Yes, okay. This is a wonderful start. Waiting is too long. Waiting on this is too long, is my comment. And K-12 school districts do not have the capability to do this alone. So any plan I think we're looking at is going to include greater resources. Is that correct?
Are you talking about the plan? I'm sorry, were you talking about the resolution?
Right, so the presentation. Yeah, so the presentation that you just gave.
Yes.
Those are a lot, those are a lot of the symptoms, you know, things we've discovered. We can't tackle all of those by ourselves, correct? As a, as a K-12 district. We need partners. We need partners. And we have to get this on the ground and running with it. So we do have a focus on this. A part of this also is threat assessment with students and staff, right? Making sure that we know who's at risk and who we might need to put preventative member, you know, preventative measures in place with. That to me is important too, that we really are able to do that.
And I think that will be work that we would do in conjunction with the safety committee. We've had some conversations with Melissa Edesheim and Laura Geisler about that violent risk assessment and the threat assessment work.
Yeah, and I don't mean it as a negative.
No, I know.
It's a, it's really a positive step in identifying those who need, who need, who have needs that we want to address before they fall into the critical category. And as the data shows, we, we may not be doing that. And certainly some of the students and our staff are not comfortable talking about this, which is really difficult. That needs to happen first and we have to have a safe place for them to do that. So, thank you very much.
Sure, being above your point, I keep thinking about Sarah's survey of 20% of students on the survey want to seek therapy but haven't or can't for a whole variety of reasons. What I'm thinking and feeling is that, as I'm listening to your presentation is, we have staff doing everything they can, looking at the numbers. Sean and Leanna are going to talk about what good practices are, what ideal practices are, recommendations are, and where we are. And they're not all in the same place. We've got some work to do. So we've got teachers that are tired, staff that are tired, kind of all the way up, probably feeling this huge weight, is my sense, my observation. And we've got, we're positioned well in terms of our physical location with resources and partners around us, but not necessarily within resources within the schools. There's a lot to manage. So I think what I'm hearing you say is, we're doing as well as we can to react to the things that they come up. But there's a lot of work we can do that would really benefit student learning, thriving academic community, if we could do things proactively to promote health, wellness, mental health. Is that, is my summary accurate or?
I think that there is a lot of work to do at the foundational level and universal level before getting to managing crises, yes.
One of the things I want to say is thank you to you and all the staff that are doing all the work and trying to help so many people deal with so many things and manage so much stuff as we provide, find ways to figure out how to provide more support in doing this as a board. Other comments and questions?
Everyone, thank you for profiling this report. It's great. I mean, I think the one thing that's kind of screaming from this report is the staffing limitation that we already talked about. But beyond that, let, let's say that we were able to, you know, increase the amount of staff that we provide in mental health. It still seems like in the report that there are other challenges, whether it be people working at silos or just, you know, marketing. What, is there like a, like almost like a coordinator or a director position that is needed to coordinate this whole thing or make it a priority, or how do you see that? Or is, is it just a people issue and we just need more people doing it, and then that's the golden goose and we're in a better place? Or I'd be interested in your play, in your opinion on how do we, if we grow it, what else is needed?
I, I think both. There's a lot of coordination to do. And I think that there, I think we need to look at our practice universally, and that requires someone to coordinate it. However, I do think that at an individual school level, staff are working very hard and just, they just, there's just not enough to go around.
One of the things I think we need to also look at is, which I love the work that Mrs. Phillips and her group are doing, because it gives us kind of an audit of K-12, what mental health services we're offering, but have we looked at how we use our resources that we do already have and how we can strategically maybe make some changes so that we can help our students right here and right now? But also, if we get more staffing, more help, what do we want that staffing and help to be? So the first step is the work that they're doing to determine what it is we need. The second step is, and what does that look like using the current resources we have and new resources that we might get?
I guess follow, okay.
I think it's critical that, again, critical that we look at foundational work, because when we look at numbers, if we say 20% of students at TOSA West or TOSA East have a half significant anxiety, we're talking about 240 students. So, so we need to look at ways to support students in building up skills and having support beyond a one-to-one fashion.
The only other thing, just because we have the students, school board members and others in the audience, and I know when Mark and I were at the youth commission meeting, one of the things that was sort of loud and clear was not necessarily an understanding of what was available today and how to access it and what are kind of the steps. So I'm curious, like, what exists today as part of that outreach? And then if you guys are, if you guys have suggestions on like, what are the ways that, I guess you're aware of, that that message is communicated, and what could be a better way? I'd be curious to know what you guys think, too. But do you know how, like, what are the ways that outreach to students happens already?
I think that we have room to improve in that area. That is my opinion, because we are busy all day, every day, and so students come in through friends and through families, but there are many, many students who don't and don't know about us.
And that's one of the six areas you have targeted for this year.
I mean, I really like the DPI school mental health framework. I like the, you know, the way it kind of sets the framework for all the schools. So this looks internally, are there other districts out there? Because I know student services, people talk, and there's social work, you know, Association for the State, and are there other districts out there that are getting it right, that are, you know, really ahead of us, that, you know, we're not like recreating the wheel, that we can look to to say, okay, maybe, you know, there's some, they're similar to us in this way but different in this way, but there's things that we can take from them? Do you know of any districts that are really just kind of knocking it out of the park in this, in this area? Or is it really just that?
You know, we, I'll just give you a quick snapshot. We had a discussion at our, it was, was the superintendent's 20 largest districts meet, and we met last week, and it's a clear, clear struggle for every district that was in there, talking about the challenges and the funding and how to get the resources for the growing and growing need that's taking place. And when you think of the size of some of the districts, much larger than us, and the resources they need to do it, you know, trying to look into, into the communities and finding unique ways to fund it, that was a big part of the discussion, looking at community service and community support to help. So it's, it's a, it's a big challenge, and it didn't, I didn't get the sense anybody was much further ahead, and I didn't get the sense anybody was much further behind. I think there's a lot of people struggling, and I would say I think we might be ahead because of the work that's going on with you guys and really taking a look and auditing where we're at, but.
My, my mission is for our district to be the one that we look, that others look to.
Me, too.
Yeah, I, like, personally, I think that multiple students at West, if there is a problem with their mental health, like, they would more likely go to a teacher instead of anybody else there. I think that counselors are there more for getting a class dropped or college. Like, I've never heard one of my friends ever say, "I'm stressed out, let me go to my counselor." I think if there was a title and a person in a room that was open before school, after school, that the actual position that I would be able to go to and not just interrupt my, I don't know, my math teacher, because she's my favorite and she'll listen to me, I think if there's an actual position, like, I really believe that that will increase, like, a lot, to be honest. I think having somebody there for that specific reason and someone that you can trust and build that relationship with will help.
And I know from my experience at East, like, student services, like, they try their hardest, it's just that they're so busy, that it's not really like a personal experience. And then, like, you get there, and then they're busy, and then you're sitting there waiting for like 20 to 30 minutes, and then you're missing class, which is more stress, and then you end up leaving, and then it'll be like, oh, we'll have them call you, whatever, but that'll never, most of the time that'll never happen unless you go out of your way like multiple times trying to reach out and get help. It's not really like, like she said, if I was to choose anyone, I'd probably go to my teacher instead of student services.
Thank you. I have a question for the students, and I don't wish to put two on the spot. I really want to know why, why peer-to-peer conversations aren't happening? Like, you know, that, is this normal? I mean, I know when, you know, my daughters were, especially in their junior year, that was a lot of pressure with all the things going on, and there were quite a few breakdowns. Let's put it, you know, put it honestly there. You know, they would talk to their peers, and I could see it as a parent. So how do you get people through that, right? Like, how do you know, is this just a short-term, short-term something? Or is this going to possibly turn into more and really affect other components of a student's life? Or, or parts of their life already affect their school life? And so students don't talk about it with other students, really?
We do, like, close friends, but like, it's just like, you don't really know, like, who can, who you can trust, especially with like social media, like, you could be texting someone, they could like screenshot it and send it to other people, and it's just like, you just don't know who to trust nowadays, it's without power.
I also believe that if I'm sharing, like, personal information with a friend, there's not much for them to do about it. Like, I don't think they would be able to set up a counselor for me. Like, it just seems not silly, but it just seems unreasonable to go that personal with somebody, and they're the same age of me, like, as me, you know, and they're not older and not, and not more experienced, and they don't, won't probably have the best advice. So I would probably talk to a teacher because they see me day to day. They see me when I'm crying about a test or when I'm really excited about, like, nationals or something. Like, I think a teacher witnesses you through the whole entire year, your ups and downs.
First, I want to say, the presentation was great. I really appreciated the, the color framing in terms of like proactive versus more specific, and I love a good SWOT analysis, which is what I'm looking at right now. And so what I was curious about, like, I really, I liked the, okay, so this is the work of the content team for this year, and I especially appreciated the, like, how do we actually market what it is we do? I know I've worked with three different families this year who had no idea about the Aurora Services or the partnership, and, you know, my initial reaction internally was like, how could you not know about this? Like, it's been out everywhere, and because there's a million things going on. So I was really excited to see that there. The one thing that I didn't see there, and I'm curious, Sonya, because you said this is sort of like part of a, a longer plan, was this connection to, like, external resources, like other programs, other organizations, whatever. Like, is there a plan to make more partnerships sooner, or is it like, we're going to work on this foundational work more before we engage anybody else in coming in to sort of maybe lift a little bit of the load? I think I'm trying to figure out, like, is there a happy medium where we're working on the preventative and the, like, foundational? Because I think also when students are always going to teachers, it adds to their mental level of stress because they take on the stress of their students. And at the same time, like, how can we take something off of you all so that you can focus on this stuff? Does that make sense?
Well, I mean, first, we want to, our priority, one of our priorities this year is looking at how to improve the emotional well-being of staff, because we think they'll have that, that'll have a large impact on students being able to feel like there is, you know, a caring relationship and that they can go to those teachers, because those are the first line of defense. We do, in the last two years, we did partner with quite a few agencies, but it depends on what you mean by partner. So we looked at the community agencies that we frequently use and refer families to through student services, and we set up meetings with them and talked about their services, our services, started talking about gaps in our understanding of what the other one does and doesn't do, what kind of information that we need to help students generalize skills at the school level, what kind of information they need in order to provide better services to them, to families when they're in those services. So, again, like Rogers, Aurora, Cornerstone, Center for Anxiety, we have several. And the elementary school student services people are doing that work continued this year.
And then my last comment is, I want to try and be somewhat solutions-oriented here, and Mark, you've heard me say this before. Is there a possibility that advisories might be a place that we could really start building communities? The sense that I get from students that I talk to is that they're just a gigantic waste of time and that stuff really doesn't get done. And yet, when we, you know, we heard from Sarah earlier about, like, talking about drills or talking about mental health, like, that's a space where kids are together all year. They're kids that don't normally hang out. I go back to your amazing crucial conversations that my daughter had the chance to participate in and how that was such an incredible experience for her. And it was with kids she didn't know and kids she did know. And I know that was a selective kind of thing, but like, I just really wish that we could figure out how to capitalize on kids being together for a short period of time, you know, once a week, that maybe that's a way into some of this stuff, to building community.
And I do think we're begging for time, so advisory at East and West are very different from each other. But I know that in both cases, there, there are a lot of people scrambling for the time, particularly with ACP mandates and, and that sort of thing. In the past, student services will go into classes, and they're trying to get that into advisories so that you're not interrupt, interrupting instructional time. I think advisories have a lot of room for improvement in trying to figure out how to coordinate all of that information, including being able to talk about, you know, safety drills.
It's a community.
That's the idea.
You know? Thank you very much, and to the teachers, too, because I know they take on a lot of what doesn't ever end up in your office.
They do.
So just the other thing I wanted to add, too, and I know we have CNA's and Family Services working in several of our schools. We have had conversations with Children's of Wisconsin right now, okay, Children's of Wisconsin, the new name, and looking at how we can work with them to help, help us as well. So we just had a first meeting. We'll see where that goes, if that leads to anything as well.
That's great.
I just think this is an incredible discussion, and thank you for bringing this up and all the input. It kind of seems to me, though, from the student's perspective, is you feel kind of alone, even though we're in this age of social media where we have access to a lot of people and a lot of information, people still feel very alone, and they're not trusting, I guess, from what you told me tonight, they're not trusting of, of other people and how the information you give might be shared. So to me, I'm just thinking, you know, off the top of my head, a lot of healthcare plans have teledoc, for example, where someone can call. We have, you know, within districts and other workplaces, we have EAPs. So is it possible a, a partner like that could help us with that initial conversation with students and their families if necessary or needed? Because a lot of people are going through things that they're not sure if they're normal or not normal, and when it might escalate or not, and what, and would it be soon or not very soon? I mean, is K-12 really the place for that? I don't know. That's why I'm really, I really want something for students and families that can really work, that can really help them along their path so that they can do the best learning and be the best person. And I'm not sure that the situation today can allow that unless we have some support on that initial interaction. I just don't see us having enough people to do that with 7,700 students and all of our staff and all of our families. How can we?
Sharon, thanks, right. Can you talk a little bit about, and I think Aurora, the Aurora Partnership is, to some degree, that? Can you talk a little bit about that for, this is, I think, maybe a good advertisement for that program in, in, in marketing in and of itself? And then I could be wrong, please correct me if I am.
So we partner with Aurora for the Student Family Assistance Program, and it, it could happen in a variety of avenues. It could come from a recommendation in conversation with a school staff member or a student services member, administrator, whatever it is, as an outreach to a family. Family could access it on their own, is open to any family in the school district. All they would have to do is call the number and say, "We're a family in the Waukesha School District, and we have an issue with blah, blah, blah." And it's a wide range of topics that they would work through with a family. As Sonya mentioned earlier, as part of our contract, families get up to six services, six face-to-face times with an individual to work through whatever concern area they have. If after those six sessions, there continues to be an area that needs additional assistance, they would refer a family to an additional outside resource, hook them up with another therapy company, whatever it would need to be to help the family out. But it really has been a really positive experience. All the feedback both Mark and I have gotten from any family that we've had an interaction with, they've had really good experiences with the, with the conversations that are happening, with the family nature of it. They often require, always require, I should say rather, that the family is part of that initial conversation at the start, so that if there are multiple prongs to whatever needs to happen there, that they're supporting from that direction.
And I think you said, you said over 200 unique families and over 800 appointments.
222, I think, was the number? Yes, that was last year.
Pretty heavy use.
Yes.
Not as heavy as maybe we would like, but.
It, it continues to grow every year. We've had it for four years now, so it's becoming a good resource for families.
So for a student to be able to do that, we would talk to a teacher to get to that, or how would a student be able to get? So. So legally.
As a student, your family has to.
Right.
So your guardians have to call. You don't need a school at all. There's a 1-800 number that you all can call.
So is there any other type of, like, organization where if I wasn't comfortable with talking with my parents, like my mom or dad about issues I'm having, is there any?
So where I think that, so if we have a good system in the schools where you have student services, staff members there, that is a place that you can get confidential help that's available to all students that don't necessarily require permission each time that you meet with us. When you meet with a therapist or you meet in a community service agency, you need parent permission as a minor.
Also, I just want to clarify too, when I said six sessions, it's per concern. So if there are multiple things going on in a family or different things with children within the household, whatever it happens to be, it's six per, they say, per issue. So that's...
One of the things that I don't think we're probably going to dive into too much tonight, but I think as a district we need to, and was embedded at some point in someone's comments this evening, is the environment and culture that is causing eminent, causing, allowing, encouraging, creating an environment where mental health is certainly increasing rapidly in terms of the challenges that students are facing and coping with and navigating. And I think it would behoove us to not just look at how we're responding to the stimuli, but to figure out what are we doing and what can we stop doing for benefit. I was at a really great keynote at the state conference last week that was saying the unique contributions the U.S. has had. We've never been particularly good in any outcomes in terms of English or mathematics. First time they tested this in the 1960s, we were 12 out of 12. We're not uniquely bad now. We've never been good. Boomers weren't good, Generation X wasn't good, Millennials weren't good, Gen Z not good. But we're confident, we're generally happy, we're risk takers, and we have a lot of confidence. And the things that are our unique contributions, where we come up with creative ideas, we don't give up, we persevere, we've got grit, all those things that kind of allow small business owners to make decisions that make no sense whatsoever and sometimes they totally work out, we are not particularly thriving in right now. And so I don't have any sense what the answers are. But I think, as we're thinking about, I get in the back of my head, thinking about our conversation two weeks ago about vision of a graduate and kind of where this fits in and what types of things that we're doing. We want all students to be successful. We want them to reach their potential. How do we create an environment that allows them to do that holistically? I think this is, I think, part of that conversation, and I have no doubt that teachers in every classroom and every school are thinking about this. And it's a conversation we need to continue to have as a district to create environments where students can thrive, not just academically, but their mental health, their well-being, physical well-being and everything else. That'd be my closing comment. We have a lot of folks in the audience. I'm curious what your comments or questions are on this presentation. Please come up if you want to share your name and address. Can we look for it here for you?
Hi, I'm Michaela Miller, 2466 North 72nd Street is my address. I'm a junior at Wauwautosa East and I am one of the founders of the Tosa East Psychology Club called Raise Your Voice, which is a branch of the NAMI organization. I would say, as students in general, we are very proud of the education that we are receiving and grateful for our students, our teachers and our administrators and everyone who's helping us to receive that education. However, I think that we see a great need to improve our mental health, especially when it does come to safety concerns. I think that, as our mission statement says, as a district, our goal is to equip and aspire students. And I don't think that it's possible for students to do that or for our district to adequately do that when students are just focused on getting through the day, not succeeding, not excelling, but simply getting through the day. I think that we as students can see the stress of our teachers and of our guidance counselors and the people that we know we can go to. And while having those connections is vital, I think that seeing that stress makes it much harder to know and to be able to have those conversations with those individuals. So I think having an individual therapist or trained professional who's in the building specifically for students to go to with issues, not someone who also is there for students when they have questions about their schedule or any of those other things that our guidance counselors do so well for us, could be a really good outlet and resource for us as students. Additionally, I think, as Mrs. Nelson had started to outline, the plan of having very clearly and explicitly outlined steps to take as a district and sharing those with the students, I think would be very beneficial. Personally, I felt very frustrated in the past because I know everyone is working very hard for the benefit of the students. However, when we can't see that, it does become very frustrating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Grace. I live at 8507 Kenyon Avenue, and I was just thinking about some things that we were talking about. I appreciate this presentation because it brought some awareness to some of the things that the school district is doing. And I think that bringing awareness to other students of if they need help, what services are already there for them, that's a really big step. I was thinking about the question about why students don't necessarily talk to one another. And I think that some of the most important people that we need to be helping are those who don't necessarily have someone to talk to. So even just having one specific friend that you can go to or even a staff member that you could talk to could significantly decrease chances of violence or harm to anyone. And so I think that working to decrease the isolation in our teens at the Wauwautosa School District is important. And I think that increasing teacher wellness and connection with other students is important because, like you were saying, we can, teachers are those who see the students every day. And so if they have the time and ability to network students who have those isolation issues, I think that that could make a big difference. So thank you for looking at the teachers too, because I think they can have almost the most power in our schools with identifying and helping youth who need it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Please.
I'm Ryan Wickesberg, 7405 Milwaukee Avenue, right across from East. I actually moved here four years ago from Arizona into the Tosa District as my first year in high school. And the first two years that I was here, I really did find it difficult to find people to go out to outreach to, especially concerning my friendships within the district because I didn't really have that strong background. So I feel like providing a position within the school to assist students that are in that need would be extremely beneficial for students like myself who are not as gifted with the friendship aspects right off the bat. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody who spoke tonight for the presentation. We, the number of staff, students, families that have talked to me about this issue is greater than any others since I've been on the board. It continues to come up in little ways and big ways and ways that they're not talking about mental health, but they are. And I think it's certainly as a society in Tosa, in Wisconsin, this is a conversation we need to continue to have. Thank you for continuing to do the work. This is really hard. And please thank all the staff who are doing this, the teachers, literally every single staff member in Wauwautosa, of how grateful myself as the board president, I think, I'm going to speak for everybody on the board here, how grateful we are for all the work that they do. Thank you. I feel like we should clap. I feel like we had someone on the board at some point who designated clap out.
Yeah, it's Michael.
Yeah, Michael.
Michael claps.
Does he? Okay, I was like... Okay. We are going to move into our legislative advocacy. Mental health resolution.
Okay. It is recommended that the school board approve the Legislative Advocacy Committee's Mental Health Resolution as follows. The Wauwautosa School Board Resolution in Support of Comprehensive School Mental Health and Trauma-Informed Care Legislation and ISEF.
May I have a second?
Second. It's a tie jinx. Double that second?
Let's go with me, Anne. Sharon's been a frequent secondary. Do you want to talk us through it?
Sure. Well, first off, I want to just thank all the parents, students, community members, staff members, other people out there who have reviewed this legislation, legislative proposal and have given us good feedback. I'll just quickly walk through some of the key highlights because it's like a four-page thing and you don't want me to read every word. But if anybody wants and needs a copy, maybe we can pass some of these around. Basically, at a high level, organizational leaders statewide have identified mental health as a key public health priority in Wisconsin. Kids and teens in Wisconsin are hospitalized for a mental health condition at more than four times the national rate. Four times. At the same time, Wisconsin's suicide rate increased more than the national rate and remains significantly higher than the rest of the United States. All sorts of organizations from Children's, Wisconsin, the city of Wauwautosa, Wauwautosa School Board have all made mental health a top priority for this year and really for the decade to come. We know that mental health is a prerequisite to success, as was covered in the report. It's sort of the foundation for everything to come. And untreated mental health conditions are frequently a cause of struggles in school. One of the more surprising statistics that we haven't covered and some other things is just the fact that, let's see, I'm going to miss it here. That's okay. There are so many stats. Basically, a lot of mental health conditions are never treated or they are finally diagnosed eight to 10 years after they are onset. So by the time that anybody figures out that there is even an issue, it's been a long time. In terms of the statistics of what third-party groups would recommend, in terms of counselors, I would say the state and Wauwautosa are doing okay. The ratio, recommended ratio for counselors is one counselor to every 250 students. In Wisconsin, there is one counselor for every 420 students. So it's, well, sort of, not the recommendation, but it's not, you know. In elementary school, it's one to 644 students. In middle school, it's one to 315. And in high school, it's one to 304. School social workers is where I think the ratio really starts to go, I'm just going to say off the rails because I'm just going to say straight talk here. Third-party organizations say that there should be a social worker for every 100 to 250 students for sort of an average school population and that there should be a social worker for every one to every 50 students for a population with intensive needs. In Wisconsin, there is a social worker, one for every 1,468 students. And the Wauwautosa School District, for the elementary school level, there is one social worker for every 1,074 students. At middle school, we have no social workers. So it's just zero. And at the high school level, we have one for every 1,619 students. So we are, and everybody is way off of the recommendation. School psychologists, the recommendation is to have one for every five to 700 students. In Wisconsin, there is one for every 967 students. And in Wauwautosa, we have one school psychologist for every 1,639 students. So if you're wondering why, you know, as part of the presentation, there's, we wish we had more staff. Yeah, we wish we had more staff. The numbers tell the story. We kind of went through some of the student data from the recent surveys. We know that our strategic plan calls for caring for the whole student and not, and obviously our picture of a graduate also kind of talks about the holistic graduate that we're hoping to create. A lot of the mental health funding that exists today is grant-based. So there are one-time grants that we can apply for to get. But as anybody who's, you know, ever worked in an organization or run a business or anything, one-time money doesn't pay for staff. You know, you can build something with one-time money, but you can't pay a salary enduring, right, with one-time money, right? Because you get one year money and then it's gone. So one-time grants is kind of what exists, but one-time grants doesn't really address the issue. So our, oh, last key point, I suppose, in connecting with Children's and Aurora and other folks in the communities, the fact that there is a shortage just sort of statewide on mental health care practitioners to the point where it's called a, deemed a crisis. So just the fact that even if we wanted to go out and get more staff, it's going to be a competition. And I think as lots of school districts kind of pivot to realize how far off of the ratio that they are too, that's probably going to be even more difficult to find staff. So we resolve in our resolution to call upon the state legislature and Governor Evers to allocate sufficient, sustainable and predictable state funding, enabling the school districts across the state to increase the staff, to get closer to the ratios, provide ongoing professional development, make mental health screenings available to students who want them, offer public information programs. And with state funding coming in, this would prevent an increase in local property taxes because if there's state funding, there's state funding. It wouldn't be covered by the local property taxes. Further, we call upon the same folks to do more to grow the amount of folks who are going into this industry. And the folks at Children's and Aurora gave us some recommendations as to what they think might help to prime the pump and get more people going into this field so we can hire them in the long term. That is the resolution. The end. Is there anything else that I missed?
The only thing that I would add that I really appreciated, Mrs. Phillips calling out, is that the question might come up, and we actually saw this in some of our survey data, as to like, why does the school district have to do this? This is parents' jobs. This is not a school district thing. It actually is a school district because in order for us to educate students, Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs tells us that we actually have to address these exact issues so that students' brains are actually ready to learn. And so it is unequivocally a school district issue. And we cannot choose how students arrive at our doors. Our doors are welcome, they're open, we are a public school, and thus it is a requirement that we respond to these needs. And so I think that's assumed and understood in this resolution, but I think we just want to state that explicitly because this is, we are making this proposal because in order for kids to learn, they have to have basic needs met. We talk about feeding students, we talk about all sorts of other things. We're talking about school safety and the work that Sharon's doing. Like, at the end of the day, they're not going, we're not going to get to the vision of the graduate without mental health support.
And I think one of the challenges, the biggest challenge with all of this related to mental health is what you just mentioned. The legislature's good at telling us what to do and putting mandates on us and saying, and for all the right reasons, but they don't fund it. So if you think back 10, 15 years ago and think about where the mental health needs, as recognized as they are now, absolutely not. So we would have to assume that all of our student services workers, employees, the social workers, psychologists... social workers, psychologists, counselors, they were, they were working hard at their job. And all of a sudden, this layer gets thrown on and said, now this is a priority, so something else has to go. The reality is, the biggest part of this is we need funding to be able to, number one, train the people at foundational level with all of our employees having a good understanding of it, but two, to add more, more staff. I know this resolution, and the key to it is saying, a big part of it is we need, we need more staff to be able to carry out this work. Schools are asked to do a lot, and I get it, I embrace that, from feeding to a lot of different things. And mental health, you hit it spot on, it's getting in the way of kids being able to learn and be successful. And we need to be able to do a better job with it. So I think this is critical, that we get support on this resolution, we get support from our legislators to help us.
And just two points to add. I think, one is, I think there's all sorts of good conversations going on, on this topic in Madison and just around the state. A lot of coalescing around, yes, more needs to be done. So I think that in this time period of, whatever you want to call it, we'll say, I think this has potential to succeed. The second thing is, I would hope that beyond Madison, I think, I think there's room for us to take a look at these numbers and take a look at our own budget and say, I mean, not today, but down the road, how do we, how do we try to make this a priority? How can we get support from others to make it better? But I really appreciate all the presentations tonight, and we could work this one into this, and we'll pull that, it'll create good outcomes in the future.
And if I can just call out a very small but mighty committee that shows up to every meeting and has helped us to sort of push this through along with some other issues.
Comments and questions on the board?
Thank you. I think it's a good start, and I wholly support this. I also see that this is way too big for K-12 education, as I'm saying all evening, I think. Milwaukee County has the greatest resources in the state right now. And we're, Wauwautosa's part of that, and we, you know, we're one of the only school districts that intersect with Milwaukee County. There's got to be a way that the legislature can put forth proposals to help us as a community be more efficient in this area for our students and families. There's got to be a way. And coordinate care with the primary care physicians, because not all of these cases are mental and behavioral health cases. Some could be stemming from physical. I don't know if the committee had any discussion on that. So we need coordinated care. We need a lot more work in this area, but I, you know, wholly support whatever we can do to move this forward quickly.
My comment would be, thank you for your work on this. It's been a lot of work. You pulled together a lot of resources. I loved how you kind of gathered support and community connections in this as you were bringing it forward. I'm excited to be able to kind of push our legislators on this, push ourselves on this. And I think that there will be opportunities for us to collaborate with a lot of colleagues across Wisconsin, in all different types of school districts who are all needing these resources. And I believe, I read today that there's $7 million additional in the state budget that doesn't have a place to go. This would seem to be a good thing to advocate as an opportunity for.
Send it to Wauwautosa.
Some of those. I don't want all of it.
What's that address?
But I.
2121.
2121.
I think that there's, there's no doubt, many, many people who need many things in the state, and this is, I think, a really big, important one. We've got some additional resources that are available, and it's a great time to be advocating and pushing really hard on this. If you haven't called your local legislator lately, this may be an opportunity, once this goes out, to push and nudge on that. Gail Kuyenga, I'm sure would love some phone calls on this. I think Rob Vining would love some phone calls. I think Rob Hutton, Rob loves phone calls on mental health issues. Give him a call, show up at his office, I think that's really important. And then.
Lakeisha Myers.
Lakeisha Myers. So all four of them, I think, love, would love to hear from Lakeisha and the importance of this. And I think this is important stuff. Mr. Kuyenga's been very supportive of lots of things, and I think he's ready to jump on board and some more in this stuff. So I think just give him a little nudge. Students too.
Yeah.
Any community comment or questions on this item?
I just want to say that I think it's important to point out that we're not going to sit around and wait for something to happen in the state legislature. We're going to continue. Our student services staff is tremendous and has, they work incredibly hard, incredibly smart, and they're going to continue to do that, and we're going to continue to plan and get better to provide more services. I need, I think it's important that we point that out, that we have a lot of great people doing great things, we just need more and look at it differently, so.
Let's call the roll.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Ms. Mufti?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rollin?
Yes.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
Yes.
It passes unanimously. Thank you all for, everyone who's come tonight to talk, to advocate, to share, to share research and student voices on this. These are really important topics at the foundation. I think one of the words I heard a lot is, there's this foundational work and continuing to find ways to make sure the resources are in place to support students to can meet their potential and be happy every single day, navigating the world as complicated as it may be, knowing that they are in a district that is supporting their success. We are going into any further public comment in a non-agenda. Oh, sorry, Sean. I almost stole your other thunder. My apologies. Superintendent Report, Wasby Resolutions. Mr. Rollin?
Thank you very much.
I'm ashamed of myself.
For the time. So the school board convention was last week, was last week, and there is a delegate assembly as part of this convention where members of every school board get together to go through the legislative resolutions that different school boards have suggested across the state. And I think we kind of went through the packet of all the different resolutions that were suggested this year. All of them passed except for one, which was all sorts of lively debates at the Wisconsin Center. The one that didn't pass, I actually went down by a two-to-one margin, was a resolution related to retiring any Native American mascots, nicknames, et cetera. A lot of the debates centered on districts seeing it as a local control issue, and that many of the school board people, not me, thought that individual school districts should just make the decision on their own. And others had a bit of a problem with, there was one bullet that suggested that some funding should be allocated to help districts from one jersey or nickname or mascot to another. So that was another bee in the bonnet, I guess, of some folks, so. But otherwise, all of the other resolutions passed by a pretty wide margin, and that was that.
Any questions or comments for? Mr. Rollin?
No questions. Thank you, Mr. Rollin, for serving in this capacity. It's extra, several hours worth of work, and appreciate it.
Any community comment on this item? Any final public comment on any non-agenda items for this evening? Seeing none. May I have a motion to adjourn into executive closed session for Wisconsin statutes 19.851C to discuss an administrator contract? Thank you, Mr. Rollin. May I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Fraley. Mr. Phillips is not seconding anything tonight. Please call the roll.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Ms. Mufti?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rollin?
Yes.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
Yes.
We will return in about five minutes and then closed session. Thank you all for coming tonight. It's much appreciated.